We call the Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, Office City Council meeting to order. We're going to have Joe Burden give us the invocation, pledge, and fact of death.
Shall we pray? Kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you in that name which is above every other name, the name of Jesus Christ our Savior. We look to you as a nation, we look to you as a local community, oh Lord, for your mercy and for your help. Guide us, I pray, guide our leaders that you have presented to us to lead us through this crisis, both our national, state, and our local leaders, our council members, our mayor right here in Apokka. Give us wisdom that is beyond that, of what we can learn through human knowledge. I pray that you will give us, Lord, an intuition, but most importantly, I pray that you will give peace and grace to the citizens and let them know of your hand being upon them and that you will work all things together for the good of those who love you and are called according to your purpose. We now come before you asking you to be glorified in all that we do and all that happens, and we ask it in that name which is above all other names, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On March 20th, 1916, Albert Einstein presents his theory of general theory of relativity. Revolutionary theory describes the interdependency of matter on the one hand and space and time on the other. It is one of the most influential theories in physics even today. All right, ten minutes, please.
Now, motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries now. Edward, change the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I do want to because we do have a, in your panel, you'll notice late today, earlier today, we did a revised agenda. I wanted to just kind of call out real quick the changes we've had so that it's clear. Item two of the presentations we are postponing, which is marked on the agenda. Item two of the consent agenda, we had a, we had to recalculate the revenue number. It was calculated on the difference between the original price that we were in the contract and then the new revised price, so we calculated on 95 cents instead of 65 cents, but that number has since been corrected and adjusted in the packet, so the packet is correct. Under public hearings, item three, and it has been noted on the original agenda that it will be postponed to a date certain of April 15th, 2020, and you can take, may I bring that up when we end this order that it is? And then items four and five are going to be postponed to no date certain when you get to those items. Those are all the changes.
Okay. Just to go back to that collage, just so, well, it's fine, it's just changing the price, okay. All right, presentations. Bob Rock, we good to go? Just send a bunch of caution, he asked that Jill, who is looking to get her Eagle Scout merit badge, needs her project, she needs to have it presented, and rather than come with her family, we figured we'd do a celebration when her project's completed, but she's got a video that we hope will work. As they're coming up, I'd like to thank Rob and Bob, yesterday we said, hey guys, can we livestream this on YouTube, and they busted their rear ends to get us to the point where we are tonight, so thank you, Rob, Bob, whoever on the team.
Kelly Robinson.
Kelly, yeah, so thank you for doing this for us, because it might be, you know, a month or so, or two months, who knows how long we'll continue to do this livestream, so.
So Julia was supposed to do the presentation?
Yes.
So she's going Eagle?
Yes.
Is this going to be, I mean, as an Eagle Scout myself, it's strange to hear this, but she's got to be one of the first, because I-
That's the reason we're doing it tonight, because her timeline is like right on the bone.
Yeah, that's impressive.
Yeah, yeah, so that was our whole intent for doing it tonight, so that she can, and we'll let the project speak for itself. Top right.
Hi there, everyone, my name is Julie Shepherd, and I'm in the Scouts BSc program. I'm in troop 4773, and I recently earned the rank of Life Scout, and next I'm going to pursue the rank of Eagle Scout. So in order to get there, I have to complete a project, which I'm really looking forward to do, because I want to benefit the Apokka community. As I've lived here my whole life, I'm 17-year-old, so I've lived here for 17 years, and I really want to give back to our community here in Apokka. So my project will entail an Ethel Cemetery in Apokka at the existing memorial that's already there. I'm going to add a series of flags behind the existing monument, and I'm going to take some pictures in this video so you can understand what I'm talking about more, but I'm going to add a series of flags to represent each branch of the military, so those will be behind the existing monument, and on either side, I'm going to add a flag of the United States of America and the flag of the state of Florida, as well as reviving the current walkway that's there, so that will entail adding some new stone painters and wood planks to outline the walkway, as well as cleaning up the age monument that's already there. So that will be the scope of my project. We're hoping to accomplish this by Memorial Day, but given the current circumstances, that might have to be pushed back a little bit more to possibly the Fourth of July, that's kind of a to-be-determined kind of thing, but we're going to hopefully get that going as soon as we can. As far as fundraising, I'm going to individually, with my team of course, carry out some fundraising events and seek help from donors such as the BFW, the Elks Lodge, and other community groups here in Apokka. Thank you so much, and I'm really looking forward to doing this project to benefit the military and the Apokka community. Thank you. Hi there, everyone, my name is Julie Shepherd, and I'm in the Scouts BSc program. I'm in troop 4773, and I recently earned the rank of Life Scout, and next I'm going to pursue the rank of Eagle Scout. So in order to get there, I have to complete a project, which I'm really looking forward to do, because-
Okay, well, that's, yes, we're excited, the, I said, boy, if there's any way you can get it done on Memorial Day, would that be great to have the service there with the-
We still get the clap, right?
We still get the clap, yeah. Okay, presentations. I'll skip the Apokka Youth Council presentation. Next up, we have the transportation update, Pam.
How much money is needed development? At the last city council meeting, you expressed concerns about the roadway conditions of Rock Springs Road and Welch Road on the north side as it relates to the proposed commercial development that is going through the development review process. So what I want to show you tonight is the overall picture of what we plan to do to fix the intersection. The intersection's going to require a big fix, so we've broken it into two phases. We've completed most of Phase One already, and this is a partnership project with Orange County. We went out and removed some of the striping on the north and southbound lanes of Rock Springs Road to increase the left turn stacking. We hung a new signal head so that you can have continuous turn, right turn off of Welch Road, what used to be was, had to stop on red before you could turn. And we also re-timed the signal, and we saw some good results from there. So there's one more part of Phase One that we want to do, and that's to re-stripe again on Welch Road, re-stripe it so you have a left, a through right, and right, and that requires hanging another signal out up there, but before we could do that, we had to do a structural analysis, which took a little longer than we thought it was going to, and it came back, and it wasn't really great news. It said that under current standards, we can't hang an additional signal out there because the master arm structure cannot handle the weight and the wind. But the good news is, we can take down that 10-by-2-foot street sign, it's lit, take that off, hang the signal, and then re-stripe the road, and then we'll have dual rights on north on Rock Springs Road. And this is a temporary fix, because the Phase Two of the project is the study that we're doing with Orange County. That's the part that's going to require additional right-of-way in two places. Right now, the project on the northwest corner, they offered if this development goes through, or has this development goes through, in exchange for impact fee credits, they'll give us 12 feet of right-of-way, which is very important to be able to fix the intersection. When, after we do the study, what we expect to end up with are dual southbound lefts, dual northbound rights coming off of Welch, some re-striping on the west side, and lengthening the turn lanes, but you can see that- It's user error, sorry. Making. Okay, thank you. So you can see here and here, these are the areas where we're going to need right-of-way, and this is what we're hoping, you know, sooner as opposed to later. This, I put this in there, it's kind of hard to see, in fact, it's impossible to see, but this is what the ultimate geometry's going to look like at the intersection. So the other thing that you asked me at the last meeting, your concern was traffic coming out of the site on the northwest corner, and also the concern about traffic coming off of Rock Springs and turning left as they do now into the Public Shopping Center. So this is the site plan, and here, you can barely see the console. They're going to put a large cement raised pork chop, and what will happen is, people can come right in, it will force them right out, it will be extremely difficult for them to do anything except for turn left into the right turn, or the right lane, and head south, unless, you're always going to have people in a four-wheel drive truck, they're going to drive over, they're going to do what they want, but for the most part, traffic and height is going to stop most people. But at the same time, the other thing we want to do is to, for safety reasons, it's a very unsafe move, and it also impacts the operation of the intersection when people come down in the left lane, southbound on Rock Springs Road, and try and turn into that entrance to Publix right there on the north side of the mobile station. So I talked to Orange County, in fact, the day after the last meeting, and asked them, could we put some flexible delineators in there as a temporary measure till we get to the big picture fix to stop people from making a bad choice? So I got Public Services to lay it out for us, we're going to apply DOT standards. Orange County said, yes, you may do this, you just have to maintain it. These things are very cheap, they're like 25 bucks each, and I think it's a reasonable fix. I don't believe, I wasn't around when it happened, but I don't believe that that entrance was ever meant for people to cross the WO line and go in there, and they just do it. But I don't, I don't believe that it was ever supposed to be that way, so we're going to fix it.
Any questions for you?
Can, is there going to be a pork chop on that side, on the public side?
I can't force them to do that, that's probably a problem.
I don't, honestly, I don't know that there's room to do it. I mean, because I, you know, because the last meeting, it was a combination of things that concerned me. It's the combination aspect that, you know, combined with new development on the northwest corner, as well as what the current condition is at Publix, this is exactly, I think, the right play, and I'm actually excited to see this, because it's twofold at that intersection. It's coming into Publix, coming southbound and making that left-hand turn in there, but more importantly, it's the people trying to make the left-hand turn outside across the two double, the double lines, so I think this is perfect. The only other comment that I would have is, when they, when they remove the striping on the load areas, it's not really a re-stripe to kind of really give clear indication on when the turn lane starts, is that going to be part of this process when they're doing the re-striping?
All of that's temporary, it was something that Orange County jumped out there and did, they did it whenever we came into presentation last, April maybe, they were out there in the next week doing it. So without doing a bunch of design work, I think that it's okay for now. When we went out and observed, right away, we noticed that traffic was going better just with that one thing, and then when we changed the signal head and did the continuous right off of Welch, that helped too. We're still having the same problem, people aren't used to being prepared to go, so they're not, they're on their phone and-
I want to be sure I'm talking about the same thing, so go back in your, where you had the overhead shot, where you talked about the current, the storage areas.
Oh, back here?
Maybe a couple, yeah, right there. See where it says extend storage up on the north side? So when they made the original changes, they just removed those diagonal panes, right? They didn't remake that boundary line to really give clear indication on where that line starts?
No.
So, and our responsibility, do we own Welch?
No, on the north side of Rock Springs, nor on Welch, on the east side, that's not ours.
But they're going to have to do some re-stripe when they make that middle right-hand turn lane, right? So on the westbound Welch?
When we do the big fix?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. Because you're going to have dual lefts there.
So are they going to make that as part of that whole process of making it?
I suspect that the striping and geometry that you see right now, other than the change that we're going to make to Welch, is what you're going to see until we complete the study and implement the big changes.
Okay, well, I'm excited about the reflector devices to kind of really drive the, drive the behaviors, so.
You said those are going to be temporary, so when they, they're there until the big fix? And then when the big fix comes in, and I don't know, I couldn't hear if you asked this, is that only going to be striping, or is there going to be some type of a concrete running?
We're going to study it first, but what I think is going to happen is, there is going to be a concrete barrier there, so it's going to delineate the turn lines, and it will be clear that there are not supposed to be any turns there, or maybe, they're going to, the study's going to look at warranting a signal a little further north, like at the Bubblus entrance, and other things that, it's a very complicated intersection, and a lot of issues to resolve, and it's nothing that money won't fix.
I'm really excited that the extended storage on Welch, turning right to turn north there, because right now, we've extended somewhat, but people still can't, they can't use it, so with that extended down, that's going to be a big help.
I think it will, we just have to tell people, you need to be prepared to go, so we'll put some signage out with it.
How soon are we going to need a temporary fix?
If you are okay with it, I'll be working on it tomorrow.
Okay.
We have to order them.
You have to order them tomorrow?
No, tomorrow's, man.
We've kind of got it designed, but we have to, there's, shall we go through some kind of procurement something, I can't describe why, I have to give Jake a word on that idea.
And why are we not going to leave them there once the big fix is done?
Because we're going to probably have a concrete there.
Probably, but if we don't, can we leave it?
If we don't, yeah. I say probably because it hasn't been designed, but if you're asking me for my opinion, I'm 100% certain there's going to be a physical concrete barrier there.
All right.
So that's, we're three years away. I want to say temporary in case anyone who comes out and, if you get calls about, why did you do that, it's a temporary safety improvement.
Well, if I get any calls, that's going to be a direct rebuttal to any complaint for reflectors, because it's absolutely needed.
As long as you have my back, I'm ready to go out and do it.
Well, and I think again, with them conceding the 12 feet, that makes all the difference, because then we have two lefts and two straight-throughs when this is when we have the big fix, right?
When we have the big fix.
Yeah, so that, yeah. So how long are we really looking at realistically until the big fix is there?
A year to do the study. The study's funded through Metro Plan. We won't get the money until next fiscal year start. Orange County, we've got a scope. As soon as the money is in their account, they'll advertise it, and I would think that it'd take eight months to a year to do the study, and then we just have to decide what we want to do, where the money's going to come from, and we may have to face some of the improvements, but the right-of-way is going to be the keystone piece. So as long as we can, we're set up right now to get the 12 feet we need on Rock Springs Road. Welch, we'll have to have a discussion about that. Orange County's going to, they're helping too, you know, we're not, we're not doing everything, it's a partnership thing.
So we're still talking a three-year process?
Yes, sir, I don't know how I can make that any faster.
But the end result is going to be?
I think it's going to be work away, just don't forget, we have the transmission poles that have to be moved. Another reason why we need additional right-of-way, Duke Energy is a challenge to work with at the best.
I'm happy with what you've come up with here, so I think this is the only way that we can look forward on, is to get to where we want to be.
We're going forward.
I do have one question. I mean, I'm excited about temporary fix. Is there any way to put a signage, but that's going to be tough, because there's going to be cars that still going to want to come and turn left up by the service station, and is there any way to warn them that they need to turn back at Bubblus?
I'll have to look at what we can put on the pavement, if there's a way to write something on the pavement, I don't know-
Yeah, because until they get used to it, they need to know that they're not going to be able to turn once it's there.
I think maybe somewhere we can put a variable message sign that says new traffic pattern ahead, something, or, I don't know, I'm going to have to talk to Public Services.
Are you talking about turning right out of the new facility there and not being able to turn left on Welch?
No, the turn left into the parking lot, into the driveway next to the service station. Because once they put markers up, they're not going to be able to turn left on that anymore, so they need to know they can turn back at Bubblus in order to go in and get to the service station. See what I'm saying?
Are you talking about new?
New service station?
No, one is already exist-
Okay, that's what it's termed, okay.
Yeah, we're going to have the delineators close enough together where there won't be no stacking, and there won't be no squeezing through.
Correct.
So.
Nick?
Yeah, I have, I'll be quick. Y'all have requested that we do a study of less than big, and I just got the study, in fact, it's still kind of in drive form, but I didn't want to wait any longer. What I had to do was to look at the existing operation of the intersection and do an operation for a signal warrant analysis and a roundabout warrant, or a signal warrant and a roundabout warrant, which they did all three. And the first thing that they found is, as a four-way stop, that is, for the traffic volumes, and this is just on traffic volumes, it's perfectly appropriate to have a four-way stop there, and it operates at level of service D, which is acceptable to our standards, the one northbound movement's operating at level of service E, which is kind of bad, and it's got a long delay. But what was surprising to me is when we pooled the crash data, there have been, since the road opened, there have been 29 crashes at that intersection. But the best part about the crash news is that there were no fatalities, and there have been very few injuries, there are mostly just small crashes, minor crashes. But with that data, it definitely warrants either a signal or roundabout, meaning that it would be appropriate for us to install that kind of traffic control at the intersection. Now, we need to do some more studies. I just needed to know what was appropriate for the intersection. This is kind of an overlay of the intersection of what the blue is, what additional right-of-way, well, not right-of-way, what moves outside of the existing footprint of the intersection. So you can see where the red is, we would need to make sure we had right-of-way there for a roundabout, and where the blue is, we would need that extra space outside of where the road is already to put a signal. If you look at how a roundabout operates versus a signal, they're about the same. The only difference is for the roundabout, you have about a seven-second delay from any direction at the worst of the peak time, which is PM. The signal, you know, it's like any other signal, each direction is going to have to stop at some time, so you've got some stacking, but the overall delay, in the worst-case scenario, there is nine point some seconds. So both are vast improvements from what you see right now. So what I'd like to do, I'm not asking you to make a decision, let us look at what we have to work with, and somehow, in perfect world, we could get this done and get it into this year's CIP. I can't make that promise, I could try, but probably, I think the best-case scenario is we'll get some things worked out and bring it forward with next year's budget and the CIP, and get it done sometime next fiscal year, if that is your desire.
Any questions? I like, personally, just from living in other cities, I like the roundabout idea if our citizens are open to that, because of what you said, the longest delay is a minimal delay, and if there's no one there, you can just continue the flow, and the long-term cost effect of that, there's a benefit there, so just depends on, you know, I'd like to hear what the response would be there, but-
Don't you think a fountain would be beautiful there?
But I just, I like that concept, I've seen it work, I like it as long as it's done correctly, as long as it's not too narrow, you know, that there's an opportunity to keep that flow.
And the first thing that they found is as a four-way stop, that is, for the traffic volumes, and this is just on traffic volumes, it's perfectly, um, appropriate to have a four-way stop there, and it operates at level of service D, which is acceptable to, to our standards. The one northbound movements operating at level of service E, which is kinda bad, and it's, it's got a long delay. But what was surprising to me is when we pulled the, the crash data, there have been, since the road opened, there have been 29 crashes at that intersection. But the best part about the crash news is that there were no fatalities, and there have been very few injuries, there are mostly, um, just small crashes, minor crashes. But with that data, it, it definitely warrants either a signal or roundabout, meaning that it would be appropriate for us to install that kind of, um, traffic control at the intersection. Now, we need to do some more studies, um, I, I just needed to know what was appropriate for the intersection. Um, this is kind of an overlay of the intersection of what the blue is, what additional right of way, well, not right of way, what moves outside of the existing footprint of the intersection. So you can see where the red is, we would need to make sure we had right of way there for a roundabout, and where the blue is, we would need that extra space outside of where the road is already, um, to put a signal. If you look at how a roundabout operates versus a signal, they're about the same. The only difference is for the roundabout, we have about a seven, seven second delay from any direction at, at the worst of the peak time, which is PM. The signal, you know, it's like any other signal, each direction is gonna have to stop at some time, so you've got some stacking, but the overall delay, in the worst-case scenario, there is nine point some seconds. So both are vast improvements from what you see right now. So what I'd like to do, I'm not asking you to make a decision, let us look at what we have to work with, and somehow, in perfect world, we could get this done and get it into this year's CIP. I, I can't make that promise, I could try, but probably, I think the best-case scenario is we'll get some things worked out and bring it forward with, um, next year's budget and the CIP, and get it done sometime in fiscal year, if that is your, um, desire.
Any questions? I, I like, personally, just from living in other cities, I like the roundabout idea if our citizens are open to that, because of what you said, the longest delay is a, is a minimal delay, and if there's no one there, you can just continue the flow, and the long-term cost effect of that, there's a benefit there, so just depends on, you know, I'd like to hear what, what the response would be there, but.
Don't you think a fountain would be helpful there?
But I just, I like that concept, and I've seen it work, I, I like it, as long as it's done correctly, as long as it's not too narrow, you know, that there's an opportunity to keep that flow, it's, it really works well.
Well, would you like your cost benefit on each, and, um, the pros and cons of, of, you know, so you can make a, um, a decision? You also have to keep in mind that in a few years, I think in, in two years out, we've got part of Vicro funded widely, so that needs to play into it as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the only, I, I think just the scale of it, um, the only concerns that I've seen from the public thus far is, you know, school buses getting through there, oversized trucks that are making deliveries, stuff like that, but, you know, those things are probably design engineered and constructed to certain standards that account for that, so, um, as long as they're designing it at standard, if that's the route that we take, then those, those should be mitigated.
This roundabout would be about the same size as the one of one, um, no, not Marden, that was like 125 feet across, this one would be 50, like the one on, um, McGee.
McGee, okay.
So, just.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, next up, we've got a proclamation for our finance team, just wanted to go here. Where is the Florida Government Finance Officers Association? It's a professional association founded in 1937, and serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, city governments, school districts, colleges, universities, special districts, and private firms, and where is the FGFOA is dedicated to being the professional resource by providing opportunities to education, networking, leadership, and information, and where is this inaugural government finance professional meeting sponsored by FGFOA and all the members governing governmental organizations, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services that they provide to our state and our community, and where is during this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now therefore, I'm Brian Nelson, as Mayor of the City of Apocca, due to the fact that proclaim the week of March 16th to 20, 2020, to be the Government Finance Professional Week. Come on up!
Our Finance Professional Week kinda got postponed with all this craziness, we were gonna have some activities planned, and I really do appreciate Mayor, Commissioners, for you guys participating in this, as you know, and I'm the incoming president, um, and this is very important to me, that my local municipality participates, and there'll be some communication, even though we didn't have this, it will be recognized on the FGFOA's website, along with the other municipalities that are, that are going on. We've gonna kind of postpone our fun-filled week of activities, of just celebrating finance professionals for a later date, but thank you all for recognizing us statewide. It's very important that it's recognized, because we do play important roles within our communities, within our communities and our cities and our municipalities, and without this organization and the support, I would not be before you today.
And how many members do we have? I mean, how many staff do we have that are members?
There's like four or five.
Edward and.
Edward, myself, Jasmine, and Edgar are, are key finance officers from the FGFOA.
So, let me get a gravitation, I'll, I'll get my phone since we don't have any, or, or, I don't have a paper. You want it here?
Yeah, come on in, yeah, yeah.
Still no space in here.
Yeah, you still have to stand.
How completely?
I'll stand.
Okay, pass far enough away that I.
I'll stand way back here if you still see me.
Okay, the mayor of Apocca wishes to speak, can he manage up on the agenda? All right, with that consent agenda, the, the notation on the change in the dirt price that we brought up, motion to approve the six items on the consent agenda, some have a motion by Commissioner Banksen, a second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries you down. Next up, Jamie awarded contract for the mowing services.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Jamie Roberson, Finance Director, City of Apocca. In April of 2019, bids were received for mowing services, and the submittals were reviewed based on their history, equipment, references, and financial capabilities to select the lowest and most responsive bidder. Eden Landscaping Enterprises was awarded a contract at $27 per acre. The vendor performed from April through July 2019 and submitted notice of termination at the end of July. Based on the inability to perform at the rate they submitted, the city accepted their termination. A rebid was issued that included bid language to allow for market rate comparison of the per acre dollar amount submitted. This was implemented to avoid any issues with the vendor submitting a bid unreasonably low. The lowest responsive bidder, Premier Lawn Maintenance, has proposed $47 per acre for roadways, $40 per acre for stormwater, and $55 per acre for utility facilities. Staff has reviewed Premier Lawn Maintenance's bid, history, equipment, and personal references, and financial capabilities. The budget being requested for fiscal year 2020 would not exceed 183,000, as indicated in the staff report. It is anticipated that future fiscal year budgetary requests for appropriations would not exceed a maximum of 274,299 dollars. Staff recommends to award a contract for a three-year period with the option of two one-year renewals for a total maximum of five years.
Any questions for Jamie? Okay, anybody in the public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, I look for a motion to approve a contract awarded for a three-year period.
The contractor is here, if you have any questions.
A three-year period with two-year, two, one-year renewal options with three-year lawn maintenance LLC, got a dollar amount not to exceed FY '20 budget of 183,000. A motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries you down. Next up, instead of Kevin, we've got Pam back up again, just trying to limit our staff here tonight, so double duty for Pam.
Lucky for y'all, we used a management program. I have an motion on top of the table. So, um, I did talk to Kevin before I, um, put these notes together, um, and what I wanna do is just kinda give you an overview of the, uh, pavement program, and then I'm gonna run you through the projects that have been selected, um, and ask for y'all to approve the list. So, um, this year there are 15 roads on the, in, in the program, we have $800,000. Um, the way we selected these roads, we had 323 calls, and 59 of them were related to the particular list of roads, and I think it's in your packet. Um, so, um, if we wait any longer on some of these roads, the cost to do them, because we're gonna have to totally rebuild, it's gonna be 45 times more than what they cost right now. So, the pay, pay for most of, most of the city's maintained roads should last about 25 years, and to get on a regular pavement management cycle, we should be resurfacing about 4% of our 196 miles of roads every year. This year we're only doing 2.3% because of the $800,000 budget. To do 4% would cost 1.3 million, and to catch up to where we should be so that we can get on that 25-year cycle, so that our roads don't deteriorate and get away from us, um, well, we have to be doing like four times, three or four times more than what we're doing this year, every year, for the next few years. So, to get our roads caught up, and what that means is to get them on an acceptable level, which would be like a six on a scale of one to 10, um, you know, it, it's just gonna take some time. But what Public Services is doing right now is they're trying to get an engineering consultant under contract to develop all the pavement management program, and that'll make sure that we get the most bang for our buck, because they'll look at all the roadways. So, I, I threw this, this in, this kinda explains pavement management in one, um, slide. If you let your pavement get past that critical range, which is, um, if you're beyond, you've lost, or you've used 75% of your capacity, for every dollar that you could have spent now, it's gonna cost you four or five dollars, the, four or five dollars as opposed to that one dollar to get fixed. So, it's very important that we not let our roads get too bad, it's, it's, so, enough about that. So, now I'm just gonna show you the roads, and I think you'll get an idea of why these are selected. This is the first grouping, um, you probably can see that better from where you are, and then we just have some shots of certain places in the roads, this is Hawthorne, another of Hawthorne, Second Street, Eighth Street, Michael Gladin Boulevard, 10th Street, Orange Avenue, Ravida Woods Drive, and Lake Piedmont Circle, and Kevin told me that Piedmont Lakes subdivision, do I say that right? The, the roads are really old, and they probably got some of the worst roads in the, the city, and were trying to attack those, but these were the worst that we're doing around now. Um, this is the second grouping of, of the 15 roads, and I only have, um, shots of Vic, Welch, and Sheila Ranch, I don't think any of that surprises you. So, my, um, recommended motion is that you approve, um, this list of 15 roads, four of the roads that we do this year in a, um, for pavement management.
Any questions for Pam?
No, I mean, only some commentary, I, I guess, you know, looking at this one, right, we're spending 800,000 to do 2.3% of our roadway, so if you kind of extrapolate that out, that, if we did all of it at that price, you're looking at 34 million dollars across our entire city. If you're, and you're saying it 25 years, is when you really, but that graphic that you just had, you're really starting to get into a gray area once you get past 12, is that right? So, if you did that, if you divided that by 12, you're looking at almost 3 million dollars a year just to do repaving.
I, I would say that, that, that this graphic, um, I, I think that we're closer to 25 years, this one doesn't really, this one just kinda goes maybe to 20, but for our weather, this is kind of a universal one.
So, and I'll give you the 25, it's 1.4 million dollars a year, so right there, we've already stayed in the case for 1.4 million dollars if we, if we're having further conversations about this one, set in tax, about transportation needs and all that sort of stuff. So, and duly needed, I mean, I wanna make sure that we're on top of these things. Now, does that mileage include, that's in interior neighborhood associations too, that's all.
This is everything that, that the city maintains, and we maintain residential roads as well as, um, connective roads and, um.
And then the last question, I talked to you, Edward, about this at one point, um, in terms of restriping, only not repaving, Lester from Vic to Plum and Sorrento, you know, some of those bike trail distinctions and stuff like that, it's almost disappeared in spots.
We have that.
I think we got like 60,000 on that.
Yeah, we have some, we have some funding in that, and what we're doing there, Commissioner, Council, what we're just gonna do there is, um, that this company will resurface, and then we have a striding company in budget that's gonna come back, and they'll re-strike these roads, and those items are also listed on their new. So, actually, what's gonna happen is, we're not just gonna strike the new ones that we repaved, we've got some other places, and the one you mentioned on the list, we've had a couple others that, that the public has given us or whatever, so the striking.
A lot of like the pedestrian, the pedestrian crossroads where they, they're old, yeah, we know those, those, the first, yeah.
And there was talk about Arrol, I know that, that Commissioner Banksen has some, we had some concerns, and we've had some citizens talk about Arrol, how it's one, we can divide it, or we can get two lanes, or people will not take the whole road up and they can't.
Just a little too far, you can't turn right.
And Kevin, his group, have to make sure there's enough distance to make the line, because there has to be a certain width to get the cars, so they'll fit in there, but they're looking at all of that before we come back with, before we do the striding.
I did have, uh, you mentioned the 25-year cycle, is that pretty standard?
In, in this part of the country it is, if you're in the north, we gotta deal with snow and ice and salt and stuff, no, it's, it's a shorter pavement line.
I have, my resident.
For the kind of roads, mostly like neighborhood roads and the lower volume, um, collector roads that, that we have, um, you know, 25 years, somehow, of course, it'll be less or higher volume.
I have a resident tell me that he moved into his neighborhood in 2001, he asked at the time, when will this be repaved, and he said, it's a seven-year cycle, and, uh, you know, I, I said, I asked him, well, who told you that? He said, well, it's the city. And he said, well, it was the contractor that told me that's the city cycle.
No.
I said, I don't think we're on a seven-year replacement cycle, so, you know, but again, there are different areas, I know down at Lake Dog, there's an area, uh, that, you know, is struggling down there as well. So, basically, you're bringing us to the top of the priority list of the worst places, and this is what we tackle first, correct?
It's, it's the best that we can do without assessing everything, which is what they wanna do. You know, I'll tell you too, that with so much development going on, and so many heavy trucks running over so many roads, you know, you have developments that are going into phase two, and phase one's kinda getting trampled, so, and also developers aren't really given anything extra. So, we're not maybe getting the same high quality that we got 25 years ago.
So, maybe we can look at making sure that as developers come in, that they are themselves not destroying the roadway and losing half of our useful cycle.
We should be doing that, yes.
They, if we can make sure and hold them to that, that by the time they're done, it has its 25-year cycle, that we can utilize them.
Exactly.
And one other thing I'd like to point out, I know it's been, this has been, since I came on board, it's kind of struggled trying to make sure we, we put the dollars that we have now to the best use for the roads where we have the biggest issues, and you can see the pothole complaints that we've had and issues, some of the roads have, um, and I'll give you a great example, we also, that's why I wanted them to, to give the map, to show that we're not trying to just, we're not just targeting one area, we're trying to make sure we can re, we're trying to spread it out to make sure we can cover some other areas, not just, just the north area or the west area, we've got, as you see, we've got plenty of roads that we're trying to do in, in South Apocca area, but, uh, we wanted to make sure that we kind of spread that, spread that out, and one of the things I wanna point out is, and Kevin, since he came on board, they fixed this, but Hawthorne had that big dip where they had the washout, they have, they fixed the, the stormwater piece underneath, so now we can pave that road to fix that, should fix that.
That was what I was asking you about.
Yes, that's that one.
I was driving through there the other day, and I, I, it was far enough away from me where the car was well enough at, and it dipped so bad, I thought the thing was gonna fall, you know, it's bad, yeah.
So this should fix that.
Okay.
My assistant has to take action?
We are? Anybody in the public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll cause a proposal in public hearing, we'll look for a motion to approve the list of streets recommended for paving and resurfacing for FY '20. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor? Aye, aye. All opposed, motion carries you down. Next up, we have Jamie Roberson, incoming president of FGFOA, with the next presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, Jamie Roberson, again, Finance Director. So, as a part of the Advent Health Apocca Partnership Agreement that you just approved on the consent agenda, the Recreation Department is requesting a procurement waiver, Brian is actually supposed to be doing this presentation, but since he's not here tonight. One of the projects affiliated with the agreement includes a fitness area at the Northwest Recreation Facility. The fitness area includes a concrete pad, fitness equipment, and a shade structure. Recreation staff reached out to find costs during the Advent Health Apocca negotiation period. Greenfield Outdoor Fitness, a recreation equipment vendor, had previously awarded the City of Apocca a grant discount in 2015 that the city could not take advantage of at the time due to funds not being available. Greenfield Outdoor Fitness has agreed to supply the same grant discount included price of the fitness equipment from 2015. Due to the significant cost savings with the equipment, the vendor was also requested to supply the cost of the concrete pad, installation of the equipment, and the shade structure. This total cost is $81,084.66. The greenfield door fitness area proposal was presented as part of the Advent Health Apocca agreement. In order to accomplish the project with a cost discount and allow for one vendor to complete the fitness area, the Recreation Department is requesting a waiver of the 25,000 formal bid threshold policy. This policy does allow for city council waivers as indicated in the staff report.
Any questions for Jamie? Anybody in the public wishes to speak on this matter?
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, look for a motion to authorize a waiver of the procurement policy for the purchase of fitness equipment from Greenfield's Outdoor Fitness. Summoned, got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, public hearing, ordinance number twenty-seven fifty-four. Susan?
Ordinance number twenty-seven fifty-four. An ordinance of the City of Apocca, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apocca Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apocca, changing the future land use designation from agriculture to industrial for certain real property located west of Coral Hills Road and north of State Route four-fourteen, comprising of nine-point-nine acres more or less, and owned by Stelly Hoven, Inc., providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Just to let you know that we reached out to the applicant, Tim Hudson, who was here a lot, been here a couple of times, and said, listen, you don't really need to come, it's the second reading, we didn't have any discussion last time, so Phil's not here, because we're trying to limit our exposure, so any questions I can't answer, but if you need to ask me, you can. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? If not, look for a motion from the council to adopt ordinance number twenty-seven fifty-four.
Sure.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number twenty-seven fifty-five.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-seven fifty-five. An ordinance of the City of Apocca, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to IL Light Industrial District for certain real property located west of Coral Hills Roads and north of State Route four-fourteen, comprising nine-point-nine, nine-point-zero acres more or less, and owned by Stelly Hoven, Inc., provided for self, provided, providing, excuse me, for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay. We have, nobody's here from Community Development, so any questions from City Council? Anybody from the public wishes to comment? Okay, with that, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-seven fifty-five. Some of them, got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number twenty-seven fifty-six.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-seven fifty-six. An ordinance of the City of Apocca, Florida, changing the zoning from County A-one Z-I-P to City Plan Development P-D for certain real property located at fifteen oh six Rock Springs Road, comprising three-point-nine-nine acres more or less, and owned by Mary F. Reed Estate, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Okay. Does anybody have the applicant here? This is postponed to date certain of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Anybody here to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, look for a motion to postpone to date certain of April fifteenth.
Sure.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith? Second, second by Commissioner Banksen? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number twenty-seven forty-one.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-seven forty-one. An ordinance of the City of Apocca, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apocca Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apocca, changing policy three-point-one R, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Now, this item is postponed, postponed to no date certain, and ask for a motion from the council. Anybody here to speak on this matter? If not, look for a motion to postpone to no date certain. Some of them, got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number twenty-seven forty-two.
Okay. Number twenty-seven forty-two. An ordinance of the City of Apocca, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the City of Apocca Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apocca, changing the future land use designation from County Rural to City Mixed Use. North Shore District for certain real property generally located west of North Orange Blossom Trail and north of Hogshead Road, owned by American Sanford Four LLC, Stephen R. Rootright, JP Holdings, Inc., Rootright Properties LLC, Rootright Family LP, JP Holdings, Inc., and James Scott Pryson, Douglas and Lisa Sarette, and James P. Purdy, comprising of three-hundred-and-forty-nine-point-three-seven acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Okay. Anybody here to talk, to speak on this matter? Look for a motion to postpone to no date certain. Some of them, got a motion by Commissioner Banksen? Second, second by Commissioner Becker? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-two.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apocca, Florida, amending Chapter Fifty-four Retirement Systems by amending Article Two, General Employees Retirement System, Section Fifty-four through nineteen. Definitions: Section Fifty-four Twenty-four, Benefit Amounts and Eligibility; Section Fifty-four Forty-four, Deferred Retirement Option Plan, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Edward?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this amendment, or ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-two, is a change to the retirement system for the general employees. The changes that are reflected here, the only changes that are reflected here are changes in the state statute, so it's bringing our ordinance into compliance with state statute, and it's also bringing our ordinance into compliance with IRS regulations. So the changes are changes in definitions, there are changes in how the employee's salary compensation is calculated based on those Florida statutes and based on the IRS regulations. So there's, and there's an impact statement required, or we're required by law to have an impacts, an actuarial impact statement done if there's going to be any impact on the, on the actual pension plan itself. So there are no changes, no impact changes on this ordinance. Also, I'd like to make it clear that the general pension boards have adopted this, this ordinance as well.
Now, one of the things that we're trying to get legal counsel on is, one of the things, one of the benefits that police and fire has is the, is the death benefit, right, they had it several years ago, and so we thought, you know, you've got guys out there, streets and grounds that, you know, could get hit, and so we, we want to add that to their benefit, but right now, we, it's...
They're checking, legal's gonna check that for us and make sure, the state law provides that in the line of duty benefit for police and fire, so they're gonna try to, to look to see if we can do something we can do in the actual, for the general employees as well, and then we can, if they can get all that verification, then we can include that in the...
And it's negligible...
Very small, you'll see in the next ordinance is a very small cost to provide that benefit to our employees.
Any, any other questions for Edward? Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, close the closing of the hearing, and look for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-two, first reading carryover for a second reading.
Sure.
Now, motion by Commissioner Smith? Second, second by Commissioner Becker? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-three.
Okay. Ordinance twenty-seven sixty-three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apocca, Florida, amending Chapter Fifty-four Retirement Systems by amending Article Four, Police Officers Retirement System, Section Fifty-four dash one-nineteen, Definitions and Rules of Construction; Section Fifty-four dash one-twenty-four, Benefit Amounts and Eligibility; Section Fifty-four dash one-twenty-five, Pre-Retirement Death Section; Section Fifty-four dash one-fourty-six, Deferred Retirement Option Plan, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Setting an Effective Date.
Okay, Edward?
So this is the ordinance, ordinance twenty-seven sixty-three is for the police officers retirement system. Again, it makes the same changes that it makes to the general fund as far as the, or the general employees pension plan with respect to the changes in the Florida statute, brings it into compliance, it brings it into compliance with the IRS regulations. Keep in mind, we have been, we have been following those regulations, this just brings this up to, up to date. This, the police officers includes the line of duty death benefit, which provides for a hundred percent of the participants' monthly salary should, should a firefighter, I mean a police officer die in the line of duty, they would have a benefit that would provide a hundred percent of the participants' monthly salary payable to, if they're married, to their spouse, and then it gives a twenty-year temporary life annuity for single participants if they're not married, to their beneficiaries. So with that, that's the, that change, again, there's an impact statement that is in the packet that has to be submitted when we, when we file this ordinance with the state, and that, that change is about a little more than eighteen thousand dollars in the annual contribution to have this, to add this benefit.
Okay, any questions for Edward? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, close the closing of the hearing, and look for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-three, first reading carryover for a second reading. Some of them, got a motion by Commissioner Banksen? Second, second by Commissioner Becker? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-four.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apocca, Florida, amending Chapter Fifty-four Retirement Systems by amending Article Three, Firefighters Retirement System, Section Fifty-four dash sixty-six, Definitions and Rules of Construction; Section Fifty-four dash seventy-one, Benefits, Benefit Amounts and Eligibility; Section Fifty-four dash twenty, or seventy-two, excuse me, Pre-Retirement Death; Section Fifty-four dash seventy-three, Disability; Section Fifty-four dash ninety-three, Deferred Retirement Option Plan, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Setting an Effective Date.
Okay, Edward?
And finally, twenty-seven sixty-four is the ordinance that makes those changes to the firefighters pension fund. I do want to point out one thing here, I'll go over the line of duty benefit, again, the impact statement, same thing, firefighter was to be killed in the line of duty, he would have those same benefits that the police officers, that the police officers would have. That impact on the system is a little more than nine thousand dollars in the annual contribution, so you see the impact there. I do want to point out, though, that we also, as you know, cancer was added to the firefighters as a, as a, the state, the state came down and amended the firefighters pension to include cancer, and so the cancer clause is listed as a disability as well in here, so that we are in compliance with the state statute.
Okay, any questions for Edward? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, look for a motion to approve the ordinance number twenty-seven sixty-four, first reading and carryover for a second reading. Some of them, got a motion by Commissioner Banksen? Second, second by Commissioner Becker? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, construction site plan, public safety, radio, communication tower, handled up, and gotta work in overtime tonight.
I'm nervous.
Likewise, while you're getting that loaded up. I couldn't thank Rob's been a big part of putting this all together, we've worked with Lake County and Motorola, and, and now we turn it over to community development to get the site ready for, for construction, but Rob, your team has put out a lot of effort there to get us where we are, and we said, thank you.
He's not done yet.
Oh, I didn't take this. Well, I figured I'd better, push out to him now.
So, this is for approval of the Public Safety Radio Communication Tower Site, and it's located at sixty-five seventy-eight Mount Leathers Road. This is a sign that in November, you approved the lease with CFX to lease, this is part of a bigger site, to put the tower on. It's gonna be a three-hundred-foot tower. The zoning assigned to this property allows the tower. We were at planning commission last week, had to get a variance for the site, not for the buildings or the tower, but because the guy wires, it's zoned agricultural, and it has a hundred-foot setback, but the guy wires are gonna come up within about thirty feet of the property line, so we got a variance just for the guy wires, and that variance was approved unanimously by the planning commission. One of the conditions of the agreement with CFX is they wanted us to leave as many trees as possible, and that is our plan, there won't be really any landscaping, it's planted pines right now, but we are gonna be required to move trees within twenty-five feet of the buildings and along the path of the guy wires, but I still believe after we remove the trees, it's still gonna be hard to see from the road and to the property to the south. And then, Rob, just snap these pictures for y'all, though, these are taken at the Harmon Road Tower, so you can get an idea of what we're talking about, this tower's four hundred feet, or that you see here, the new tower's only three hundred feet, but the guy wires are pretty much the same, and I think we, we are gonna put the ballers around the same as this. And development, view committee looked at this, they looked at the variance and recommended approval. Under normal, if this was some other thing, it probably wouldn't be coming in front of you, because it doesn't trip that twenty-five-hundred square foot building size, they're very small, but because of the nature of the use, we wanted to bring it to y'all, so you know what we're doing here.
Any questions for Pam or for Rob?
Well, it's funny, as I was reading through the packet information, I stumbled across page four sixty, I thought this might be a multi-purpose effort, because I was looking at the plans here, and it talks about a trap use kit. Not know anything about a trap use kit, I learned something new every day, but...
Rob just, yeah, he's smiling, he wanted to see if he gets that.
Well, you know me.
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? If not, look for a motion to approve Public Safety Radio Communication Tower construction site plan.
Sure.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith? Second, second by Commissioner Becker? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, Resolution two thousand and twenty dash oh four.
Resolution number twenty twenty oh four. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Apocca, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty, providing for a budget amendment.
Commissioners, Jamie Roberson, Finance Director, the budget amendment includes changes in funding and appropriations related to the Advent Health Apocca Partnership proposal that you just approved on the consent agenda, as well as the new business items that we approved previously. This proposal was approved at last week's city council, followed up with a formal agreement this week. These appropriations are for the projects that are expected to be completed by the city through fiscal year end nine-thirty, twenty twenty. Please note that funding is spread out over a five-year period for the contributions from Advent Health. This five-year spread of funds requires us to use sixty-three thousand, one hundred dollars from the general fund reserves in addition to the ninety-eight thousand year one contributions.
Okay. Any questions for Jamie? Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the closing of the hearing, and look for a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty dash oh four. Some of them, got a motion by Commissioner Becker? Sure. Second by Commissioner Smith? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, municipal reports. Fisher, thank you.
Goodness, you know, it's been a busy week for us, and I congratulate the fellow commissioners down there, and just excited to go forward with the challenge, the challenges that we're facing just suddenly, and, you know, but I'm, I'm excited to work together on that end, and just, I would really like to just state this, I know everybody would agree with this, let's support our local businesses, you know, in the way that we can, our restaurants, you know, people are afraid, and we can still do that in a safe way that helps them make it through this, this season.
Commissioner Smith?
I, I have the same concern, but my concern is also for our, our school kids that are gonna be out of April fifteenth, and I originally attempted to email Mr. Bass and ask if it was possible to us, uh, do some kind of program for, for those youth in various parks, uh, during that time, that sounds like that's for the defeat purpose of being, what's one of those, I, I just quit the building of it, uh, but I do have a concern as to, uh, what they're gonna be involved in doing that, and still to do a town hall, and in some cases with no supervision, because parents are gonna be at work. Uh, I am glad to see that, once you have school board start on Monday, we'll be provided meals at various school sites, and also that's a plus, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Becker?
I'll return the congratulations to my fellow commissioner down there, and since we're streaming on YouTube, I'll take the opportunity to look directly at the camera and say thank you to the voters of Apocca that put their trust in us to do the job that we're doing here, so, and to echo your point, I mean, I think we all talked to Robert today in terms of the chamber and the initiative that he's putting out there, so, again, looking directly... directly to the camera, the takeout of Apopka Initiative that the chamber is embarking on, just to make sure that we're, you know, supporting, we have such a wonderful small business restaurant community here. So just please frequent them, purchase them, get all your meals from there. We all know what a zoo that the grocery stores, grocery stores are these days, so please, please support them. But I look forward to serving on council for the next four years, and enjoy it. So, thanks.
Okay, Edward?
I have nothing.
All right. Bert?
Only Mr. Mayor, if you want me to address the email, what he said?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's important, I mean, I know that, why didn't you address it?
Joe Burd, City Attorney for the City of Apopka. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, as you all know, I sent you a, an email talking about why we are here in a physical venue, and it seems to be cutting against the grain of what even the federal government has asked us to do, we're trying to avoid crowds of no more than 10 in one time. As you saw in the email, in the state of Florida, we're in just a slight bit of, of conflict here because we, we boast about being one of the most transparent states, sunshine, all those kinds of things, all those sorts of laws. And so, what is required under the statute is that in order for there to be a meeting that's going to comply with sunshine law under the statute, you need to be here in a quorum, the council needs to be here in a quorum physically. Now, there have been letters that have been written to the governor requesting that he issue a waiver. He has given executive orders 20-53 and 20-52 where he has given discretion to the local governments to waive certain normal procedures and requirements, but nothing specifically that waives the physical gathering of the quorum for, for, to, for us to be able to comply with the sunshine law. The issue, you will see some municipalities, you will hear some municipalities who are trying to come up with what they call communications media technology, ID of virtual meeting, where you all from home could meet and we could set up some sort of leg perhaps that the public could interact with you, like on Zoom or something like that, where they can actually be in a queue, raise their hand, take questions and interact. And there are some who are going for it. I will tell you that like you, I have been inundated with just information, emails about coronavirus and response and the way to do it, and the attorneys, the local municipal attorneys in the state of Florida have just been discussing this, to be frank with you, almost ad nauseam for me. Because at the end of the day, the law is still law, and we have attorney general opinions that have stated over the years that even in the midst of hurricanes, right, that in those disasters, in order for there to be, for us to comply with sunshine law, there needs to be a physical presence. So my point would be to you two things, that when you see these other municipalities doing those sorts of things, it's, it's still not been, there still has not been a waiver issued from the governor, at least since I left my office and came down to this, to this meeting that I'm aware of. And until that comes from the governor's issue, is from the governor's office, the concern for many of us who are on the side of we've got to follow the law as is today, is that anything that the council might decide on can be challenged, it can be determined to be void at an issue, that is void as of the moment that you decided it. So, the, the point being here is, is that I'm going to just kind of hold the line in my advice to you that says, do what we're doing now, which I think is very important, and the public may not know, and if I may say, we were all checked as we came in, our, our temperature, as we came in, we have a skeletal crew that's here, you all have, we have not shaken hands as far as I know, and we're, we're doing everything we can, but we're still trying to follow the law. And until the governor, governor's office issues that waiver, my concern would always be about any decision that gets challenged. And so, while there are, and I have a file folder more than just the letter that I sent you, that letter really lays out very well, I think, the issues and was succinct, are more succinct than I would have been. And so, I'm glad to answer any questions, but that's my recommendation that we continue to do what we're doing unless the governor tells us otherwise, and I will notify you immediately if you don't hear it from some other source, if it changes.
Questions for Mr. Burd? Okay.
No, I was trying to, this is going to be really cheesy, but, so premier lawn maintenance, you should feel confident that your decision is going to stay put. No, the note was clear, and thank you for providing that to us.
Just to kind of give you some, some context, you know, certain legislators, you all know that, that we had to, we didn't have to physically be in our seat to vote, we had to be in the chamber to vote, we couldn't even be in our office. We had, we had a little break room behind, you know, the, the rostrum, which we could be in there, somebody could vote for us. But the only, it was interesting what the senate did on the other hand, it was kind of interesting, if you had a, two opposing votes, you could, if both of you were gone, they could cancel votes. So you could say, hey, I'm not going to be here, you're not going to be here, we'll cancel the vote, which was kind of an interesting, those center rules they had. But anyway, so I, I'm, I'm old school, I think, you know, until we're a hundred percent sure that we, we can do this thing virtually, I, I just, I don't feel comfortable. And so, I, I think this is the right decision for us, and appreciate Joe at least looking into it for us, so.
I agree, as much as I like high tech, I mean, that's, that's cool, the cool factor, but we can't jeopardize the decisions that we make, because it can create more complications for us.
Okay, now, last but not least, I got quite a few things, I just want to kind of go over with you. Camping Board will be on Friday, March 20th, to, to confirm the elections, it will be at the Supervisory Elections Office. Certification will be on March 27, 1:00 P.M. The unofficial turnout for the city was 23.5% of registered voters, 79 of 19 of the 33,694 registered voters voted. Just so you note that, those numbers. Let me go to the, I guess not bad news, but just the news first, and then, and then a couple, end with some good news. I've got, there's a, there's a chart here, it's got some red ink on it as well. Thank you, Jamie, for putting that together. I, we, we know we're in, you know, in rural areas, we know we, we, we collect about 11 million, almost 12 million dollars in sales tax, that's our, what we have in our budget for this year. And I'm, I'm just speculating, because of the, you know, if you figure 50% of our tourists, or 50% of our sales tax dollars come from the tourists, it's going to be down substantially. And so, we're anticipating a, about a $2 million sales tax shortfall this year. So for the next seven months, we think $2 million is probably the number we want to look at. So, we also think because of the, the stock market declines, although this won't hit us this year, we'll probably almost, we'll have a probably a $2 million pension shortfall in the 21, 22 budget year. So here's kind of the things that we are doing, not only for, from a budget standpoint, but from a, from a policy standpoint, and so I just want to kind of go through them for the people on, that are watching this live. We're not hiring, no new hires unless we approve them. So anything that's non-vital, we're not going to hire. No unnecessary spending, Edward and Jamie are looking at all our spending, if it's not, you know, critical to the, you know, the, the day-to-day operations around here, we're not going to, we're not going to spend it. No employee travel without prior approval for a number of reasons, as we all know. We're having no face-to-face department meetings. Let me give you an example, is every morning, 6:30 or 6 o'clock, Josh has all his guys down at, at Solid Waste, they get together and talk about the routes and what, what's out for today. No longer, they're going to go straight to the trucks, get the trucks and go do their, their routes. So any departments, we're trying to do non-face-to-face meetings, so we're trying to do that as best we can.
Do they have a regular meeting?
The, the, the drive-in, yes, they do, yeah. But this, across all the departments, we're looking to do that, we're going to, we just close, at lunchtime, we close the, the walk-in at the utility billing. We put out multiple Facebook posts about, you know, trying to do everything online from, from community development to utility billing and all the things that we can do online, we're trying to get that done that way. Fire stations, all fire stations are only open at the front, the front, off the front desk. You know, used to you could go through, and you'd go through the back, and you could, you could hang out. No longer going to do that. No community relations events, the police and fire, no events until further notice, no fingerprinting at the police station. All firefighters will be evaluated and monitored before they enter any nursing homes, assisted living facilities. We encourage all bills permits to be paid online or, or entered over the phone. Utility bills and new service, the walk-up will be closed, drive, and you can use either drive-through or AMSCOT. All city facility rentals, we are encouraged everybody to cancel, we'll give them a full refund. We are, because of, you know, we have employees that have children, we want to open up a children's camp for employees only, and this will be for K through 5th grade, we figure that's the ones that have the most impact now. You know, one of the, one of the employees brought up about, you know, what happens when the daycare is shut down. We don't have the, we don't have the license to do it anymore, so we can't do it. One of the things I, I think we want to look at is shift our spending to utility fund projects. You know, we've got the general funds that we're, you know, our sales tax, a lot of those dollars go into, but we, we've got utility fund projects that we can still fund because it's coming out of the impact piece. So we, what we want to do is gear up and see if there's some of these projects we can go ahead and, and get in the pipeline now, with utility fund dollars that are, that are, you know, obviously they're in their own fund, that we can, we can use those. Edward is also looking at, looking to refinance our bonds, the rates have plummeted on municipal bonds, so maybe there's, there's an opportunity there to, to, to reconsolidate some of those, the, the bonds we have outstanding. We're going to close the museum, and our part-time girl that's, that's over there picked her right up, came right over, Elizabeth came over and was cleaning door knobs and, and helping us with, with, you know, the areas where we still have the public that are, that are here. So she's, you know, didn't, didn't fatten eyes, and we appreciate Elizabeth and her help there. We've canceled the Folks' Festival, the Apopka Proud Concert, Public Safety Days, the Easter Egg Hunt, Concert Series, Farmer's Market, Prayer Breakfast, Little League Soccer, and the Terrence out at Northwest, but not prayer, just the breakfast. Yes, 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 just the breakfast, correct. We just want to let you know that the food, they call it grab and go for the school-aged children, is being distributed at Apopka Middle, Rolling Hills Elementary, Wekauka High School, Wheatley Elementary, Wolf Lake Elementary, and Zellwood Elementary. I think it's from 9:30 to 2:30. What we've also done, because the school will be closed, well, for those at the school, going school that we have is in the city women's, which is Wekauka High School, they've asked us to put a couple of police officers there, so I think up to four officers will be at Wekauka High School. What we're also going to do is the, the SROs that are now not going to their schools, we're going to have them patrolling South Apopka, we've had some, some incidents here in the last week, so we're going to, those extra resources will go to South Apopka for, you know, as long as it schools out and we don't, you know, those SROs are, are doing, looking to do something.
But isn't Wolf Lake the elementary in the city?
In Wolf Lake, I'm sorry, Wolf Lake, yes, yes, yes. So we'll have, we'll have officers there as well. Let's see, what else? We're, I think tomorrow around lunchtime, the fire department will be going out to Advent, Advent Health Hospital to do some training for, you know, if this thing ramps up, you know, what we, you know, what we can do. And then last but not, not least, you know, I hope it's not commercial for y'all, but I, I just, I don't think we can shut down business here in the city. I, we're going to, we're going to take appropriate precautions, we're going to do what we can to limit exposure. For instance, if somebody wants to come into community development, we're going to have it one at a time, so it never be, you know, a, we're going to spread people out, we're going to, you know, we're going to do the best we can, but, but I, I just don't think we can, we can shut down the city at this time. So any questions on that before I go to the last couple items?
Only question, I don't know if there's anyone who would know this, with the school shutting down, what are they going to do for manual testing?
I hear that, okay, all we can, no school raids, no testing, no anything. Yeah. Any other questions on the, that cheap, okay. The last thing, I guess I'll, I'll leave you with some, some good news here. Well, squaring in, well, this, you go to bed. Squaring in, we don't know, what I, what I would, would ask our two commissioners that have been re-elected is, we could do the squaring in on 15th or the 28th when we take office, which is 12 o'clock. What I would ask is, let's separate both, both commissioners by 30 minutes, so that, that your, the folks that want to, you know, there supports your, your, your reelection and your squaring in, come, wait 30 minutes, and then Commissioner Banksen, yours comes in, if, if that's, you know, we still want to do that now. Or you can just do it, just, you know, we can get you to.
Yeah, I mean, I think we were both of them, I said that, I mean, as we get closer, if, if this stuff is kind of going away by then.
Okay.
We would prefer to kind of do a joint, but.
I, I agree.
But if, if circumstances presented that require us to do, I'm, I'm fine to do it.
Okay, I just, just wanted to bring up, yeah, that's, that's for you guys to figure out. Just so you know, Jennifer Solomon is not running for reelection, so she's, I don't know when she heads to Arizona, which is where her husband is stationed. You know, obviously, she's great with child, and so we'll see how that, that goes. Two other things, Susan took, took, put us pretty good, packed it together tonight, so we thank Susan, and big, big shout out to Rob and Bob for, you know, putting this meeting together, you know, online for us, we, we appreciate, you know, just gave them the, the challenge yesterday, so they, they came through with, I guess like a little final tomorrow, maybe go online, but anyway. And then last, I will leave you with some good news, in the budget, we had $750,000 for our fire station, and we had $500,000 for the Harmon Road Extension. Now, it still needs to be not limited, vetoed out by the governor, so we're going to, we got, still got some work to do, but for now, we've got $750,000 for our fire station, you know, Fire Station 6, and $500,000 for the Harmon Road Extension. So, with that, I'll mean, close.